Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Councilwoman Danielle McCray, representing the 2nd District and Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have from the committee Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District, Councilman James Torrance from the 7th District, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer from the 5th District, and Councilman Mark Conway from the 4th District. From the Council President's Office, we will have someone joining shortly. Okay, in my apologies, so we have Nikki Thompson from the Council President's Office. From the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themelis and also Sophia Gabber-Morata. Also in attendance, we have Matthew Peters, staff to the committee. Before we get started, as always, just a couple of ground rules. I'm just asking that you stay muted until you are recognized by the Chair, that you do mute yourself when you are not speaking. Before you speak, please identify yourself, the agency or organization that you are with, and your position. Please speak slowly and clearly. After you are finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you are recognized by the Chair. And we do ask that committee members and city agency officials keep their video on for the duration of the hearing, unless there are technical difficulties preventing you from doing so. The committee has two items on the agenda today. First, a work session, excuse me, first, a work session on Resolution 21-0003R, informational hearing Baltimore's COVID-19 vaccination plan, and then a work session on Resolution 21-0052R, informational hearing Baltimore City employees' safe transition to work after COVID-19. We're going to start with Resolution 21-0003R for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department, Baltimore's healthcare community, and other interested parties before the Baltimore City Council to discuss Baltimore's COVID-19 vaccination plan. The committee held a hearing on this resolution on January 27, 2021, and follow-up work sessions on June 16 and November 10 of 2021. Today, we will hear an update from the Health Department on the current surge of COVID-19 cases and our progress vaccinating Baltimore City residents. After that, committee members will have the opportunity to ask questions. At this time, we're going to start with our Health Department.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. Let me go ahead and share my screen. All right, can everyone see this okay? Okay, all right. Good morning again. My name is Dr. Latisha Jirasa, and I'm the Commissioner of Health for Baltimore City. Thank you, Chair, for this opportunity, and thank you, council members and those that are tuning in. This is a great opportunity for us to review updates in the city's COVID-19 overall response for the past year, almost two years, actually. So this is just our reminder that the data being presented today is up to date as of January 12. This is a high-level agenda. We will be providing general data updates. I'll also be discussing vaccination updates. I'll spend a little bit of time talking about the Omicron variant. I will also talk about boosters and additional doses. I will discuss vaccine passports, as well as ARPA funding for vaccination and testing updates. So again, beginning with our data updates. Back on December 4, the Maryland Department of Health did experience a security incident, and subsequently, servers were taken offline, and this has impacted our ability to report on COVID data. About 95% of the state-level surveillance data has been restored and can be found on their dashboard at coronavirus.maryland.gov. However, we are not able to externally update that data on our dashboard because we've not received the restart of those data flows to populate our public-facing dashboard. So this includes our case data. This also includes our death data, our testing data, and vaccinations. Though we cannot update this in an external-facing way, we are still receiving some of this data internally, and it continues to drive our work around testing and vaccination, specifically ensuring equitable access to both. So this is taken from the state's website, coronavirus.maryland.gov, and specifically looks at our case rate compared to the state's case rate as of January 10. We were averaging 200 new cases per 100,000 residents. This was a seven-day average, and the state was averaging 199 new cases per 100,000 residents for a seven-day average, so relatively the same. And we have seen, if you look at the graph, we have seen a slight decline in this positivity just in the past few days. Again, I'm sorry, not in positivity in case rates. So now looking at positivity, switching gears to look at positivity. Baltimore City's positivity as of January 10 was 20.64% compared to the state's positivity, which was 27.6%. And likewise, in the past, just the past few days, we have begun to see a slight decline. We were previously above the state in terms of positivity, still well above our goal threshold of less than 5%, but we are seeing a slight decline there. So shifting gears to talk about vaccinations. Again, if you recall, back in January 2021, we presented our initial goals for vaccinations, as well as subsequent benchmarks, and we set a goal of 80% of residents being vaccinated against COVID-19 by February 2022. So with the recent approval of the 5- to 11-year-old group back in November, we have created a slightly separate timeframe, since they are only recently approved, to ensure a similar benchmark of 80% of that population also being vaccinated, in this case, by September 30 of 2022. So this is our vaccination dashboard, and as I mentioned, we are not receiving those data feeds from the Maryland Department of Health, so it is up to date as of December 3. And at that time, 76.3 residents over the age of 18 had received a first or a single dose of vaccine, while 72.5% over the age of 12 have received a first or a single dose, and 14.7% of those 5 to 11 had received a first or a single dose. Overall, when we look at all city residents, and again, this is inclusive residents that also, you know, are not eligible for vaccines, so our less-than-five group, those who might have a medical condition that precludes them from getting the vaccine. When we look at everyone, 65% at that time had received a first or a single dose. We do continue to note disparities in vaccination rates, as evidenced by this CSA vaccination coverage map, which I'm going to show in a larger size in a couple slides. And those areas that have the lowest vaccination rates are where we continue to focus our vaccination clinics. So very quickly, this graph just shows, you know, the comparison of cumulative doses given of COVID-19 vaccines and those that are considered fully vaccinated, and in this case, full vaccination references to vaccines, not necessarily the booster dose yet. And again, this data is up to date as of December 3, and you can see even in October and November, we were seeing that line begin to slope up. So we were seeing an uptick at that time of individuals still getting vaccinated on a regular basis. So blowing up that CSA map and looking at where we locate our clinics. So again, the syringe on this, the red and white syringe, represents our weekly Health Department-supported vaccination clinics, and the blue graphic represents where those clinics are also offered to our 5- to 11-year-olds. To date, we've had over 1,300 Health Department or Health Department-involved COVID-19 vaccination clinics as of January 5, and over 44,000 COVID-19 vaccines administered at our clinics or our involved clinics as of January 5, and that does not include vaccines that were given in our mass vaccination pods early on in the pandemic or vaccines that we give to employees at our internal 1,200 East Fayette clinics. So as I mentioned, while the city is on track to meet our overall goal of vaccinating 80% of residents against COVID-19 by this February, we recognize that disparities still exist, especially when we look at vaccination coverage in our young people, so specifically Gen Z-ers or millennials and African-Americans. So this data is up to date as of November 29. And as a whole, at that time, the city would have needed to vaccinate 436 12- to 17-year-olds a week and an additional 1,079 18- to 34-year-olds a week, as well as an additional 4,229 African-Americans per week. As I mentioned, we continue to focus our resources on communities that have the least amount of access or that have been disproportionately hit. Our value communities work, again, is heavily focused on our communities of color, and we also have value communities that support our pediatric populations, which ensure that that group is getting vaccinated as well. Many of our clinics are co-located within schools, and we've worked closely with city schools, again, to provide vaccination clinics for that population. So now, switching gears slightly, I did want to spend a little bit of time discussing Omicron. And again, I think most people know that Omicron is a variant of concern that was initially detected in South Africa in November. Since that time, it has taken over as the dominant variant here in the U.S., and it possesses about 30 mutations in the spike protein, which makes it highly transmissible, transmissible, leading to faster spread from person to person. Emerging data does suggest that it causes milder cases. However, we know that folks that are not up to date on their immunizations or who might have underlying medical conditions do still remain vulnerable to severe disease. It is more likely, Omicron is more likely to cause breakthrough infections and reinfections compared to previous variants. But again, you know, we know that the vaccine can be helpful in preventing severe illness, hospitalization, and death, even as a result of the Omicron variant. We have seen some decreased vaccine effectiveness over time against infection, but again, it still very much protects against hospitalization and death. So Omicron is the dominant variant, as I mentioned, here in the U.S., as well as in the Mid-Atlantic region. So this graph represents the shift from Delta as the dominant variant to Omicron as the dominant variant by January 1 of this year, with the orange bar graph representing Delta and the purple bar graph representing Omicron. So this indicates what the lineage of the particular variant was of those cases that are being sequenced by the CDC. So again, at this point, we believe that Delta only accounts for about 6% of all cases of COVID, while Omicron accounts for almost 94% of all cases. Because of how transmissible it is, we have seen the significant surge in infections. Again, we've also seen this rapid rise in hospitalizations. So the hospitalizations currently are the highest they've ever been throughout the pandemic. There are currently over 900 individuals admitted in city hospitals that have tested positive for COVID-19, and this number, as I mentioned, exceeds all previous peaks. In the past two weeks alone, we've seen 170% increase in hospitalizations here in Baltimore City. While we see this large increase in hospitalizations compared to earlier in the pandemic, there are less ICU or intensive care unit admissions, and most hospitalizations are trending more towards acute care or just a regular medical bed. The number, however, still remains concerning because we recognize that many of our hospitals are experiencing staffing shortages that contribute to less overall ability to treat COVID and non-COVID patients. So we remain concerned about our hospitals as they weather this current surge. Our Health and Medical Command, which is led by Fire and Health, still meet regularly with our hospitals to discuss crisis planning and what additional surge support is needed at that level. So now to talk a little bit about boosters. Boosters are recommended for individuals 12 and up. So all of our clinics are providing some form of a booster dose. For clarity and for nomenclature purposes, a booster is considered to be an additional dose of the vaccine given to someone who initially built protection with that primary series, but over time, that protection decreased, which is normal. It's normal to see this, and it's what we call waning immunity over time. In this instance, review of data really does suggest that over time, there's decreased protection from mild or moderate COVID in those that were even fully vaccinated initially with the two-dose series. As such, we are recommending boosters to everyone, again, over the age of 12. If you're over the age of 12, if you're between 12 and 17, you should receive a booster Pfizer dose five months after that initial vaccine series. And if you're over the age of 18, you should receive, whether it was Pfizer or Moderna, a booster dose five months after that initial series. If you receive Johnson &amp; Johnson, you should receive a Pfizer or Moderna booster two months after completion of your original series. Again, we can, at this point, mix and match booster doses, though, you know, again, it's up to you which one you choose to get. I will say again, what's important to note is that booster doses do help to protect against severe disease, hospitalization, and death, even in the case of Omicron. So this graph reviews vaccine efficacy over time. So again, the very first portion of the graph represents after the second dose, how effective is the vaccine, in this case, against Omicron and Delta, with the black square representing Delta and the gray circle representing Omicron. And we see that over time, as you move away from that original series, you lose some effectiveness. So when we look at both the Pfizer and the Moderna, with the BNT representing Pfizer and the mRNA 1273 representing Moderna, that if you provide the booster, that efficacy increases in both cases, both against Delta as well as Omicron, though slightly less so in the case of Omicron. So as such, again, highly recommend all residents over the age of 12, once you've been fully vaccinated, to get your booster, especially in those that might be part of a vulnerable population, our older adults, those who are immunocompromised, or those with underlying medical conditions. Now, I also want to talk a little bit about additional primary doses. So this is slightly different from your booster dose. So additional doses differ from the booster dose in that these are considered for individuals who might be immunocompromised, and so maybe did not amount, did not mount a maximal response or optimal response when they received the first series. So additional doses are typically recommended 28 days after the very first series. So it's almost like a third dose, but, you know, again, it's 28 days after that first dose. And again, these doses are now recommended for anyone 5 and up who is immunocompromised can receive that Pfizer, that third dose of Pfizer, 28 days after completion of the second dose. For those that are 18 and up can receive that third dose of Moderna, if you receive Moderna, 28 days after the initial dose. Those folks should still get a booster. So five months after completion of that third dose, there should still be a booster given because, again, that additional dose is more just to bolster the initial, the initial series in those that are immunocompromised, and then the booster is still required to provide additional efficacy against Omicron and Delta. So additional doses that I mentioned are available at all of our community-based clinics. And if you have questions, please, please consult your primary care physician on whether or not you're eligible for that additional dose. So, mention this a few times, but we have booster doses, we have additional doses available at our clinics. Early on in our vaccination efforts, we went to senior public housing sites, as senior housing sites as well as public housing sites, and we are returning to those sites to administer booster doses. 24 clinics have been held to date, 19 at senior housing booster site, senior housing sites, and then five have been held at public housing sites. And then to kind of round out our discussion on vaccinations, we also have our homebound vaccination program. To date, over 1,400 doses have been given, this includes a primary series as well as boosters, to those homebound individuals and their caregivers. Folks can still self-refer in through our call center, 443-984-8650. They can also register online at the state's No Arm Left Behind program. We continue to partner with Civic Works, who is helping us to identify individuals who may not be connected to any particular services, and this continues to be a multi-partner effort. So always want to thank our partners at the Fire Department, the Corso Lom, Life Bridge, Lutherville Pharmacy, the National Guard, and University of Maryland Medical System. So to review the funding that we will be receiving around ARPA to support vaccination efforts and how that will be used, the overall amount of funding for fiscal years '22 to '25 is a little over $13 million, and we will be hiring additional support staff. There will be clinical staff hired to support our assisted living and congregate living facilities. There will also be outreach staff for our value communities. I've mentioned our value communities in previous hearings. So these are the groups that we know, again, have been disproportionately impacted, and we've hired trusted messengers throughout the community to talk about vaccination, to support with overall outreach and encouraging folks to get to our vaccination clinics. We will also be better integrating much of our vaccination work within existing services. And so we have our clinical services, HIV and STI testing that's done in the community, as well as our syringe exchange program, and we want to incorporate vaccination into those existing work streams to ensure, again, equitable access, especially for our harder-to-reach populations. We'll be bolstering the current immunization office, which is a small but mighty team to cover all things COVAX, flu, and other vaccines. So in addition, throughout this, we have also provided childhood immunizations, and we know that during the pandemic, many children fell behind in their childhood immunizations. And we'll also be supporting a mobile vaccination team, again, that can go out into the field and provide vaccinations on site. Additionally, we'll be supporting continued transportation. We currently can provide transportation to individuals who need to get their vaccination appointments, and we want to continue providing that service. I mentioned our value communities. We receive training and technical support from the International Vaccine Access Center at Hopkins and Morgan State University. We will continue working with those partners. We will be providing licensing and maintenance for IT systems that also support vaccination efforts and technology equipment for staff who go into the field. So just to review, I know many know that the mayor is currently considering a vaccine passport for Baltimore City. So I wanted to present data that's been done on vaccine passports internationally, locally, and at the country level. So generally, a vaccine passport, there's a couple different names for it, but I will probably say vaccine passport most frequently. It really refers to when a business requires proof of vaccination status or proof of exemption accompanied by proof of a negative test within a certain time period for entry to receive services at that particular location. These programs are largely focused on nonessential businesses, and again, they will typically have some level of a medical or religious exemption. So some of those nonessential businesses might include indoor food and drink establishments, your bars, your taverns, your restaurants, indoor cultural and entertainment establishments, so your concert venue, a sporting venue, movie theaters, indoor exercise and recreational facilities such as gyms or fitness studios, and indoor event and meeting establishments like banquet halls or hotel common event spaces. As background, some European countries implemented these early, back in April of 2021. So between April of 2021 and August of 2021, there were a few European countries who implemented this program, and there was a study that came out in December of last year that really compared six countries that introduced this vaccine passport, again, focused on nonessential businesses, and found that the requirement did lead to increased vaccinations between 20 days prior to the deadline and 40 days after the deadline in those countries that had lower-than-average vaccination rates prior to this announcement. So specifically, those increases were seen in vaccination rates among those under 20 and for those 30 to 49 years of age. So this study included countries Denmark, Israel, Italy, France, Germany, and Switzerland. It didn't necessarily break down the impacts based on race and ethnicity or socioeconomic status, which is one limitation of this particular study. Looking across the United States, I know this slide has a lot of words on it, but the gist is that there are a few major cities that have already implemented a vaccine passport. There were a few states that have banned passport requirements, but some cities, again, within a particular state, have chosen to implement vaccine passports for nonessential businesses. So starting quickly with New York City, key to NYC, this is vaccine, proof of vaccine is required to insert into indoor dining, fitness, and entertainment or meeting venues. A month after implementation, the city announced that vaccination rates increased by 9% overall, with a 13% increase for those aged 18 to 34. And city officials during that time also canvassed about 50,000 businesses to get input on the passport. Since implementation, only 15 businesses out of 31,000 reviewed were found in violation. And New York City is now also requiring, with Omicron have required 5- to 12-year-olds to also have at least one dose, while 12 and up must be fully vaccinated. The Oahu Island in Hawaii implemented a similar program called Safe Access Oahu Program from September to November, and they required employees and visitors to be fully vaccinated or have a negative COVID test within 48 hours of entering establishment. Children under 12, in this case, are exempted from the requirements. While in San Francisco, they also require proof of vaccination for 12 and up to enter or work in indoor nonessential establishments since August. At that time, they did not have a mask order. They have subsequently reinstated that mask order. Looking a bit more locally, DC announced their vaccine passport program on December 22. And this, again, is applicable to many of the nonessential businesses I mentioned earlier. 12 and up are required to have a first dose by January 15, while 12 and up are also required to have that second dose by February 15 of this year. Those with medical or religious exemption can show proof of a negative test within the previous 24 hours. Montgomery County is also reviewing a resolution with their county council this week and next week, and they will be taking a similar phased approach with a focus on nonessential businesses. 12 and up required to have that first dose by January 22, and 12 and up also required to have a second dose by February 15. Five-year and one-month, so they are bringing it down to slightly younger age. So those that are five-year and up, five-year and one-month and up, will be required to have all doses excluding boosters by March 1 of 2022. Again, these programs, at this point, are not addressing the need for a booster, but they are focused on ensuring individuals get their first and second vaccine doses. I've been convening a health and business roundtable here in the city since August of 2020, and I was able to meet with this group just to review much of this data. And additionally, our team is also meeting with representatives from the Maryland Restaurant Association and entertainment industries throughout this week. So now to talk a little bit about testing. So just as background, the Health Department has been hosting testing sites since April of 2020. We continue to host our testing sites, which are all walk-up, Monday through Friday. We have at least five sites per week. And while we saw the increased demand for testing, we are glad that we had many of these sites in place and that we were able to flex the current capacity of existing sites. So we had about 36 clinics from December 1 to January 11. By the end of December, we saw our daily volumes increase from about 100 people per clinic to, at times, over 500 per clinic, which mirrored what was being seen across the city with the increased demand for testing. We also saw our positivity increase as well. So again, in early December, we were seeing rates of 5 to 22%, and by late December into early January, it ranged from about 25 to 47% of those that were positive. Again, we continue to ensure that these sites are accessible, that they're walk-up. We don't want to limit our test sites to appointment-only, though we understand, you know, why sites are doing that, but we just don't want to have barriers for those that may not have internet access to make an appointment. We also want to be able to deliver results to everyone, even if they like internet access. So our call center helps to support, you know, those individuals who may not be able to access their internet, access the results via the internet. So we're actively exploring other options to increase community testing sites and do hope to expand in the coming weeks. We're working with community partners to increase awareness of other testing sites throughout the city. As we're seeing expansion elsewhere, we're coordinating with the Maryland Department of Health on additional state resources being sent to the city. This includes a FEMA or CDC-supported site, as well as some of the MDH-supported sites at our local hospitals. We're very excited. We had two partners come online within the past few weeks, Nomi Health and AccuReference, that we've added to our weekly schedule. They are partners that are testing here in the city as well. And just this week, Johns Hopkins Bayview launched a testing site, too. So also to talk about rapid test kits. So as of January 10, the city had received about 18,000 test kits from the Maryland Department of Health. We've allocated all of those. 17,000, almost 17,000 have already been distributed, and the remaining 1,000 or so have been allocated to 17 community-based organizations in our waiting pickup. We always give our CDOs about three-day window and certainly saw some challenges with weather, so we try to accommodate. Of those 18,000-plus test kits, almost 5,000 went to libraries who did a distribution event. Of those 18,000-plus test kits, almost 5,000 went to libraries who did a distribution event. Over 8,000 went to 153 community-based organizations. Over 1,000 went to our testing sites. Over 800 went to our vaccination sites. Over 800 went to our syringe exchange program. 500 went to Safe Streets. And 360 have been given out through our home visiting program. Additionally, we received a shipment of 100,000 test kits that the city purchased independently. And our finalizing plans for distribution to various partners, it will very much mimic how we've distributed before with the focus on community-based organizations and libraries as focal points, given their location throughout the city, as well as their support of our value communities. And the mayor has promised additional testing kits to city schools, which we'll also be distributing. We will be making more announcements soon discussing distribution plans for these kits. And we'll also be purchasing additional test kits for future distributions. And then lastly, do just want to talk very quickly about how to protect yourself and the community. So I hope that it was noted how important it is to get vaccinated. But again, please, please make sure you're up to date on your vaccination. If you do your first dose, get it. If you do your second dose, get that. If you qualify for a third or additional dose, talk with your primary care physician and get that as well. And please get boosted. I can't stress enough that though Omicron, you know, folks that have been vaccinated can still get Omicron, their outcomes are significantly better than those that are unvaccinated or not fully vaccinated. So please get boosted if you're eligible for your booster five months after your initial primary series in most cases. Wear a well-fitting mask when you're indoor in public spaces, whether it's double masking or wearing a KN95. Masks very much help with decreasing transmissibility. So please wear your mask indoors, avoid large crowds and large gatherings, continue to physically distance, practice proper hand hygiene. If you are ill, get tested and stay away from others. And if you were exposed to someone with COVID, you know, please, again, get tested and stay away from others pending your results. And that concludes my presentation. Again, thank you all so much for this opportunity to talk about our efforts around testing and vaccination as well as Omicron.
Thank you, Dr. Geraza, for your thorough presentation. You did answer many of my questions that I had within the presentation. I just appreciate it. I'm going to open the floor to committee members for questions. Committee members, just signal or use the race, excuse me, use the race-hand function if you have a question for the Health Department. Before I start, I do want to acknowledge noncommittee members who have joined the hearing. That's going to be Councilman Christopher Burnett and also Councilwoman Odette Ramos, who is with us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. For my first question for Dr. Geraza, we know that in, you did, you touched on it within your presentation, but we do know that the need for take-home COVID-19 tests, it was underestimated, especially around the holidays. Can you speak more to just how do you plan to handle the initiative in the future?
Yeah, I mean, I think we experienced a surge that was seen across the state and across the country in terms of demand. I mentioned that we've had our walk-up testing sites since April of 2020. And if you can imagine, this summer, there would be days our walk-up testing sites might see less than 30 individuals. And so that demand rose very rapidly. I think, you know, we were all trying to, you know, rapidly kind of catch up. We did have the initial test kits that we see received from the Maryland Department of Health and pushed those out, again, to libraries, to community-based organizations. But I don't know that, you know, we anticipated what that demand would look like. So subsequently, again, I commend the mayor for supporting us in independently purchasing those kits. As I mentioned, our very first shipment from MDH was less than about 5,000 kits. We subsequently received a few more. But again, the demand was so high, I think we were all trying to catch up. But that really is what led to the purchase of those additional 100,000 test kits. As I mentioned, that will support city schools, ongoing support of our CBOs, as well as continued support of libraries to do distribution events.
So just to make sure I understand, you're continuing with the initial plan, making sure that they're going to the libraries, they're going to community-based organizations. But we should be able to handle the need because obviously, there were more, there are more test kits that are coming to Baltimore, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, I mean, you know, the first shipment was 5,000 or so from MDH. We recently received over 100,000. So the hope is that that will certainly meet the demand, but I think it can be hard to predict. I think a lot of that demand was driven by holidays, by travel, by folks that are getting together with their family. And I anticipate that in subsequent weeks, we'll see this demand decrease. So I think we're still, you know, we collectively are still learning, what do those increases and decreases look like? And like you said, how do we ensure that we have the appropriate supply to meet those demands? You know, we really do believe that 100,000 is a good start and better than where we were when we first received those kits from the state.
Thank you. Just for my second question, I just wanted to know, could you share more information on the expansion of the booster eligibility for kids ages 12 to 15? Specifically, how is the Health Department and supporting agencies or organizations just communicating the expansion to children and parents alike? What techniques are you using to just educate parents on the importance of having their children boosted?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I mean, we continue to partner with city schools. And so we work with city schools. Again, we developed a flyer that we want city schools to send out to families to talk about that increased eligibility, which is pretty recent. I mentioned our value communities. And so one of our value communities is our pediatric, pediatric value community. So again, working with parents who support that value community to share the message of the importance of 12- to 15-year-olds also getting that booster. We also have been working with OSI around communication at our Be More Vaxxed website. So again, it's very, very youth-friendly. And so talking about the importance of vaccination and boosters on our Be More Vaxxed websites. Certainly, if there are other recommendations on how we can expand communication, we're open to that.
Thank you. We're going to move to Councilman Conway at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Director Geraza, for really just giving us a lot of really good insight on what's going on. I have two, hopefully, pretty, probably not easy questions, but just ones that have been on my mind. You noted that the daily case counts have started to go down in the last couple of days. Do we have a sense for why that is? Are we seeing people change their behavior? Or are we, do we have a sense for how quickly the Omicron variant has gone through the city? And have we seen enough people get it such that it's bouncing back? Or could it also be that many people are now testing with at-home test kits? So we're at a different phase in the pandemic. Do we have any sense of that?
Yeah, I think it's multifactorial. I mean, I have thoughts and theories. I mean, we talked about the, really, the high transmissibility of the Omicron variant at a time when we were also celebrating holidays, right? And so we really kind of discovered Omicron right around Thanksgiving. And so you had a number of individuals getting together for Thanksgiving, subsequently for, you know, holiday parties throughout the month of December, subsequently for Hanukkah, for Christmas, for New Year's Eve. And so I think that that certainly contributed to many of the high numbers we were seeing, just the fact that people were really coming together and that this is such a highly transmissible variant. So I mean, I am hopeful that now that we're kind of through the holiday season, we will begin to see a decrease. A piece of information that we're still missing is the volume of testing happening across the city. We know what it is across the state. That's presented publicly on their dashboard. But I also, you know, would wonder how the volume of testing may have shifted in the past few weeks. I don't, you know, again, we don't necessarily have that information, but I would guess that there has been a shift in the volume of testing. Likewise, the rapid, the rapid test kits, it is, it's hard to quantify. You know, we, the state is setting up ways, better ways for people to report if they take a rapid at home and it's positive. But there aren't, at this point, I think, really great ways of that being, you know, reported. And so I don't know that we have a true estimate of how many folks are doing rapid at homes that subsequently become positive.
Yeah, no, that's super helpful. And you tied right into my next question about testing. Of course, with rapids, I think they have been helpful in just helping people figure out how they should be operating if they are positive, that they can know more quickly. I do know that folks have been frustrated or confused about how to navigate the testing and testing lines. Tell me more about how we're handling that. I know we're in, once again, at a different point. We don't have the convention center running as a major testing operation, but to that end, we don't know how many tests we're getting out there. But what can you tell me about that?
Yeah, and so the convention center is still operating. They are just now requiring appointments. And so they had shifted, and they were seeing very large volumes. So they had to go from being able to take walk-ups to really having appointments so that they could accommodate the larger volume. But they are, they are still operating in a different location, and we do still list them. So, you know, if you plan ahead, I know that people can still get appointments there. Again, much of our sites have remained walk-up. I think we continue to try to expand our ability to see many, as many people as possible at our walk-up sites. We're now seeing the, some of the sites I mentioned that the state will be supporting pop up near hospitals. So we have Hopkins Bayview, and I know the state is bringing some other sites online to really alleviate some of the burden that hospitals were seeing in the emergency departments for individuals maybe coming to get a COVID test. I mentioned two of our partners, Nomi Health and AccuReference, that opened up testing sites. Specifically, I got a chance to visit the AccuReference testing site and want to thank Councilman Schleifer for his work in supporting that. And it's a drive-up site that moves people through pretty quickly. I know they're seeing over 1,000 folks at that time at their height, you know, that were driving up and seeing them relatively quickly. So again, I think we're trying to expand capacity as quickly as we can. But I don't know that any of us really anticipated that the surge would hit the way it did and still, again, don't have that clear picture of exactly how many tests are happening in the city due to the data breach.
Yeah, thank you. That helps a lot. And of course, you know, folks are still struggling with long lines. And I think it also makes me wonder, when folks do have symptoms, knowing that these lines can be four, six hours long sometimes. I know some people just decide not to do it, and I wonder how many folks just stay home. Hopefully, and they quarantine, but some folks just decide it's just not something that they can commit to. With that, thank you.
No, understood. I think, you know, again, to date, we've not had to turn anyone away from our testing sites. And we hope that we never, never will. You know, again, I think we're trying to rapidly expand capacity and hope that, you know, we don't, we don't see that day.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Dr. Geraza, I just want to commend you and your team during this very difficult time in COVID. I had a quick question related to wastewater testing from the Maryland Department of the Environment. Can you speak to how we're using that data that they're testing the wastewater on a weekly basis? And how that is, how that is aligning with some of the testing efforts that you all are doing throughout the city? And the only reason why I bring that up is because of the low vaccination and high testing in South Baltimore. And we have three sites that are testing wastewater on a pretty consistent basis that have shared high rates of COVID-19 in the wastewater. But I'm not connecting that the vaccination sites or any type of mobilization is happening. And so I may not be just aware of what you all are doing. So can you speak to that, ma'am?
Sure. So I'll start and then probably bring in Dr. Greenbaum, who is supporting that work more directly. So we are still using that data, and we still indicate to individuals if it's high and recommend that it get, that they get tested. It's slightly different now because there's such high transmission occurring. But we, again, have tried to focus our vaccination clinics on areas where we know have low vaccination coverage. I will now turn it over to, again, Dr. Greenbaum, who has helped to support that effort alongside the state in terms of wastewater testing here in the city. You're muted, Dr. Greenbaum, if you're talking. I still can't hear you, but maybe others can.
Okay, Dr. Geraza, I think we're going to come back to Dr. Greenbaum. Councilwoman Porter, did you have another question?
No.
Looks like they logged off. They may be logging back on.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I don't have any additional questions.
As soon as we see Dr. Greenbaum pop back up, we're going to come back to your question. At this time, we're going to move to Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Commissioner, for being here this morning. My question is going to be around the vaccine passport. As I'm sure you know, I'm a huge advocate of people vaccinating. And the vaccine site that I set up has done over 15,000 vaccines, and we're still going strong, and we'll continue to do that. And so I want to get everybody vaccinated. However, even with all of those efforts in place across the city to vaccinate people, we still have neighborhoods that are on the vaccine dashboard that are as low as 20% vaccinated. And so I'm gravely concerned that those neighborhoods, if there were a vaccine passport in place, if 80% of the neighborhood can't walk into the grocery store and can't walk into a local business, then who's going to be picking up essential items for them? And so my question for you is, how do we handle that? If, you know, if there were to be a vaccine passport put in place, which I'm completely opposed to for that specific reason. I do like the fact that it will get more people vaccinated. I'm going to encourage them to do so, but I am gravely concerned about the immediate, the immediate challenges it would pose. So how is that handled regarding those neighborhoods? And how do those folks get the supplies and food and other essentials that they need if there was a mandate, as opposed to just certain businesses picking and choosing if they wanted their own vaccine passport at their establishment?
No, thank you for that question, and thank you for that feedback. I had a really good meeting with the Health Business Roundtable yesterday. And they brought up some similar concerns about how it would affect consumers. I do want to note that a vaccine passport would be applicable, in this instance, to nonessential businesses, so not grocery stores or retail centers. It would be focused on, again, as I mentioned, some of those indoor dining establishments, indoor recreational facilities, indoor event venues, and indoor fitness studios. So not so much your essential businesses, where you would get some of those key supplies, but really those nonessential services. What previous cities have done, for example, you mentioned even carryout. It is not applicable to someone coming in to pick up a carryout or delivery meal. It is applicable to someone who would be dining inside of a restaurant. And so, you know, very much appreciate that. And one of the things at the Health Business Roundtable also noted was just getting more feedback from consumers. And so we'll continue to gather additional feedback from that group. But again, do want to note that it is not for essential services. It really is focused on those nonessential services.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. That's good to hear. I did not know that. That's the first time I'm hearing that. And so is the definition of essential services, is that going to be based off of the same definition that we had in the beginning of the pandemic as far as who was able to be open when there was closures? Like, you know, the hardware stores, for instance, were considered essential and were open. So is it going off of that same definition? Or is there a new definition that you guys are looking at?
No, it would be similar. What we would look to do is really define those businesses that it would impact. And so probably less calling out of those essential services and more focused on the nonessential. So again, those indoor dining establishments, restaurants, bars, taverns, those indoor recreational facilities, a movie theater, a bowling alley. We'd be very clear in defining what those nonessential services consist of. But we, you know, I'm hearing your feedback that it would be helpful to also identify what is considered essential and who this doesn't apply to as well.
Again, so are we going to have an opportunity to review that in this committee before it were to take place to have a discussion?
So I would defer to the mayor's office. So still, he is still considering it. So I would defer to the mayor's office on how he would like to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. We're going to move on. We're going to-
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. We're going to move on. We're going to move back to Councilwoman Porter. I believe Dr. Greenbaum um is available at this time. And Dr. Greenbaum, if you would, if you're able to answer Councilwoman's port, excuse me, Councilwoman Porter's question at this time.
We think Dr. Greenbaum is having some challenges unmuting. I don't know if the host might be able to unmute her.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Sorry about that. So, um, there we go. Um, so thank you for asking about the wastewater um uh uh COVID program with Housing Authority of Baltimore City that we're doing in conjunction with Maryland Department of the Environment. It certainly is a much different scenario now with transmission being so high across the city and widespread across the city. Um, a a a different perspective of of that program than during times when the transmission is a lot lower and then you would see isolated increases at various um places throughout the city and then could have a very pointed response of of um um of of testing and 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 vaccination there. Um, the program is still ongoing. We still review that data regularly, um, both with Housing Authority and with Maryland Department of the Environment. Um, at this time, um, similar to what we did at at some other times over the course of the the past year that the program has been running, um, it's my understanding that residents are still notified every time that elevated levels are found in the wastewater, even though we're seeing that more frequently and more widespread. And um, and we provide testing information. So we recommend everyone in the, in the housing facility to get tested and we provide them um with the main schedule um of of testing. Certainly, our, our hope is that we're able to pivot back to providing more testing events for the, for um uh for that group. We did do some pilots with them with some home testing kits and are seeing if that is um um a helpful way to do testing, not of the rapid test, but with some home um send-out uh send-out kits to see if that was another way to provide testing um in response to some of those elevated levels. That was before this rapid, that that was before the very end of December, though, before we saw these very high levels. Um, and are, and are we coordinating with the vaccination team to discuss how to best coordinate the um the the testing and vaccination efforts there? I I I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Greenbaum. And um, just to follow up with that question, one of the things that I'm a little bit concerned about is that it's so concentrated within the public housing areas whereby we know that wastewater is kind of, it's, it's a much larger radius. And so like, are we doing any type of testing like public housing and also the surrounding areas, or is it just mainly focused on public housing?
So it's my understanding the sampling is coordinated directly between um Maryland Department of Environment and um Housing Authority of Baltimore City. The Health Department is really involved in the, in the testing response. But um, it's my understanding that currently all those samples were, were very specifically chosen from wastewater streams that are coming only from those Housing Authority facilities because those were the residents who were notified that this was happening.
Okay.
And then those were the residents who are notified of high, high levels. So um um at this time, it it is um uh limited to those, those wastewater streams.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you so much.
The only thing I might add, um, thank you, Dr. Greenbaum, is that we have had multiple vaccination clinics at our public housing sites. And so, um, you know, recognizing, um, you know, that there is a continued need and that they are generally in lower vaccination coverage areas. Um, we have partnered with um our, our housing sites to also provide vaccination.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And everyone, everyone, please forgive me. I have a little one home right now. Okay, you can get up and say hello. Um, my question, Dr. DeRosa, is, okay, and you say hello, is related to city schools. Um, first is what supports have we thought about, as I say, the offer for testing? Because often a number of our students come from vulnerable populations within the city and aren't vaccinated. So one, how are we supporting with testing outside of their current testing model? And then my second question to that is how are we supporting vaccinations out of that current model as well? Um, because we know if kids are vaccinated, more likely that severity is less.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. So um, last week, just last week, the mayor announced that we'll be donating rapid test kits to city schools. Uh, so we, he did announce a donation of a hundred thousand test kits to city schools. Um, and they'll be getting that, that first um portion of the donation um likely early next week. Um, so I want to thank uh Mayor Scott for his forward thinking and providing them with those additional resources. Um, we work very closely with their team as they develop um models around testing. Um, and and um, city schools, I think, has done a really great job of having really screening testing for months now um before other jurisdictions here in the state to identify those students and isolate them early. Um, again, we, we work closely. I meet with city schools um at least once a week uh to discuss um how things are going with their current testing program. Um, and as they think about shifting and adjusting that program based on updated guidance, um, we meet with them. In terms of vaccination, um, again, we prioritize all low-vaccination um areas. So that would be inclusive of of populations um from, from birth on um to make sure that we have uh vaccination sites there. We have been partnering with city schools since vaccination became available um to our adolescents, providing vaccination clinics um on-site within schools um uh that, again, have lower vaccination coverage. And we've made them very accessible to young people, but also opened them up so that they're accessible um to families. So we, uh, in terms of how we select schools, we partnered with city schools um to identify um those schools in low-vaccination coverage areas. And we've also deployed about three hundred thousand dollars worth of grants um to organizations um across the city through civic works um that support our young people being um vaccinated. Um, and we'll be, again, uh, doing a similar um grant model to those organizations supporting young, young people getting vaccinated um in in the coming uh months.
Thank you, Dr. DeRosa.
Committee members, are there any additional questions at this time for Dr. DeRosa? Dr. DeRosa, I have one additional question before we move into um recess. Just wanted to know, with the known importance of receiving boosters, has the city thought about changing the definition of fully vaccinated to include receiving a booster dose?
Yeah, I think we want to align um as much as we can um with the CDC. And so when you say the city, are you thinking about how, by city government, or are you thinking about city as in residents that we're serving?
City residents.
Get clarity. Okay. Yeah, no, we, we very much want to align um with the CDC. And so I I think it's, it, there's a couple of things, right? So obviously, boosters are extremely important for our populations that were vaccinated um some time ago. But we also recognize that there is a portion of the population um that is unvaccinated. And we, we are still working to get those folks, um, making sure that they get their primary, um, and then their second dose. Um, so we would, again, be be following CDC recommendations on how we define what fully vaccinated means. Um, but also want to balance that with the importance of people who um can still get their, their primary dose, who still need that very, that very initial um dose. So we have to make sure that we're, we're considering, considering both.
Thank you, Dr. DeRosa, um, as always, and also to your team who are doing some great work. Um, we are going to place resolution two one dash zero 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 three R. It's now in recess. The committee will likely hold additional work sessions in the coming months to keep the community informed about the city's continuing vaccination efforts and progress. The committee will now move on to resolution two one dash zero zero five two R. Informational hearing, Baltimore City employees' safe transition to work after COVID-19 for the purpose of inviting the Baltimore City Administrator, the Director of the Department of Human Resources, the Commissioner of the Baltimore City Health Department, the Director of the Department of General Services, the Director of the Office of Emergency Management and the Baltimore City Safeties R, to appear before the city council to discuss the plans and strategies that are being developed to transition Baltimore City employees back to safe, physical work environments. The committee held a hearing on this resolution on August the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Today, we will hear an update from the city administrator and the Restoration of Services Oversight Committee on the city's status and plans, particularly in the light of the current surge in ca- in cases due to the Omicron variant. After that, committee members will have the opportunity to ask questions. And right now, we're going to move to the city administrator and the Restoration of Services Oversight Committee.
Very good. Well, good morning, uh, Chairwoman McCray and members uh of the Health, Environment and Technology Committee. Uh, as you know, I am Chris Shorter, City Administrator for the City of Baltimore. And today, uh, I will be joined by the Director of General Services, Director Chi Chi Niaga Nash and Sebastiana Giachi, who will, uh, the city's safety czar, who will present more detailed information uh about the Return to Service Oversight Committee uh during this hearing. I'd like to start by really take a pause and moment to uh to to thank and acknowledge the tireless efforts of the entire Baltimore City workforce. Uh, over the past year, they have shown the ability to adapt to an ever-changing environment while continuing to provide critical services to our residents. Um, as you know, uh, the surge in COVID cases nationwide is caused uh as caused by the Omicron variant, has also had a serious impact on the city. Uh, the city of Baltimore, the surrounding counties, and certainly other big cities uh around, around the country. In response to the surge, we have paused plans to return to work uh and have went back to a maximum telework posture uh with specific recommendations about masking, distancing, and other safety protocols. All in-person services have not been canceled. Uh, and the work of our first responders and emergency personnel will also continue with the heightened awareness of safety protocols. Uh, this decision, like all of our decisions, was made to protect the safety and well-being of residents as well as our employees. As we confront an uncertain future and we will continue to follow the data and make reopening and back-to-school decisions that are informed by the guidelines of CDC, Maryland Department of Health, and the Baltimore City Health Department. I want to, again, thank you uh for the opportunity to sort of open this morning uh this discussion and am happy, uh, obviously, to answer any questions. I want to also acknowledge the other directors who are on um on the, uh, on the Zoom call and look forward to uh to them answering questions if needed as well. Uh, I'll end my remarks there.
Thank you. Um, committee members, there was a presentation um that was emailed to all of us um from the RSOC. Um, were you, was the RSOC going to go ahead and present at this time?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, good morning, Chairperson McCray and um all committee members. I am Chi Chi Niaga Nash, the Director of Department of General Services and one of the members of the RSOC Restoration of Services Oversight Committee. Um, I do have a copy of that presentation and I will begin sharing it now. Um, is that visible? Thank you. Um, thank you very much. So we are here as a follow-up to present um a second time. Uh, last time we were before this committee was in September. And um, these are the, the agenda items that we have for you today. Um, I I say "we" because I'm joined by several other members of the RSOC um who will be available for for any questions that committee members have. And um, at some point during this presentation, I will be handing it over um to the city safeties are uh Sebastiana Giachi to take over for the final few slides. Um, what we will be presenting to you today is, again, just a recap of of who we are as the RSOC, what we do, um, what our composition is. We'll highlight um activities from twenty twenty-one calendar year, uh, what we were able to complete, to accomplish, and um to 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 put in place. And then we'll, we'll um discuss some of the um current decision points that are before the RSOC and and the city administration and the actions that are, are in the midst of uh either being implemented or currently um being, being put into place. And then finally, we'll wrap up with employee vaccination and testing. So whereas um uh Commissioner um DeRosa talked about citywide vaccination and testing, our focus will be solely on the employee population. Um, so again, just a quick recap, um, the governance structure of the RSOC is um such that in the middle there, the oversight team, which comprises, and now the next slide, I'll, I'll walk through who the members are from the various agencies in mayor's office. Uh, we meet at a minimum three times weekly. Sometimes we meet every single day, uh, depending on the urgency or the matters before us. Um, our role is to manage the uh the work of the work streams. And the work streams are, are the, the, the uh, the working groups that are made up of the subject matter experts across the city in matters of HR, occupational health, um logistics and dealing with, with um, with changes that need to be made to our facilities, equipment that we need to install, how we do the communications, the data and metrics that we review and that are used uh for compilation of our dashboards. And then, of course, any funding and resource uh conversations that need to happen about how to support any of the initiatives that we're putting in place. Um, we also exist to establish expectations and assist agencies in decision-making on all matters uh related to employees and and uh COVID response. And then to ensure the coordination across those agencies so that um there is not a, an ad hoc response, but that we are optimizing how we can um in a collaborative effort make these changes and ensure that all employees citywide are being considered as, as we make the um, as, as we uh address health and safety in the workplace for those employees. Um, we, the oversight team, reports up to an executive, executive committee to whom we raise up issues where we need uh the mayor's office or or the health commissioner to uh to, again, to weigh in on, on recommendations that we might be making. So we're not the ultimate decision-maker on certain, on certain items that require that second level of approval. So we, we do defer to them on some issues. Um, and then we also rely on them to to pass down to us um information on initiatives that might be coming up, on issues that they're aware of, that we're not, that we need to um to start planning and coordinating how, as a city, we will be able to implement them or respond to them. The composition of the RSOC is as follows. So we have uh representatives from IT, the Health Department, DGS, Human Resources, the Law Department, the Mayor's Office, the Office of Civil Rights and Wage Enforcement, OEM, the Labor Commissioner, Risk Management, and then our city safeties are. So just wanted to start off with, uh, before we get into the meat of it, just uh some examples of resources that we have made available to employees, to managers, to agency heads. Uh, the first one being an Employee Resource Guide, which is really um a series of FAQs that is available to every city employee um that makes, uh, that provides them information regarding masking or return um or or travel guidance or um or what changes have been made in the workplace to keep them safe. And so having that information at their fingertips, oh, I'm sorry. Um, we just wanted to make sure that employees have that information at their fingertips for them to consume as they needed it. We uh regularly review it to make sure it is still the most current and um updated as we put out um additional significant guidance. Uh, I I mentioned um some data that we also review and compile uh dashboards. One is the Employee COVID-19 Tracker, which is data that is received from uh, from agency HR personnel. So when they are notified by employees that an employee tested positive, that information is put into a tracker. And that is one of our, that is one of the ways in which we are able to track employee positivity. And then we also have the uh Team Up for Employees Safety and Health, um, also known as the Team Up Liaisons. And that dashboard indicates to us that their efforts And that dashboard indicates to us that their efforts in, in, in the spot checks that they perform, or in the identification of any concerns that exist in, in city operations that they are trying to lift up for, for, for some kind of remediation or, or for the RSOC to be able to, just to be aware of in case we needed to intervene. We also have on the, on the city's main website, a Restored Services webpage. And that is where we make accessible to the public information about which services have been restored, particularly the public-facing services for individuals to understand when, for instance, the Bureau of Revenue and Collections at Ablewoman is open again for, for paying of bills at the cashier counter, or the, the toyard being back open. So again, we, we make every effort to make information as easily accessible as possible. Finally, we have, this will be going out today, is making accessible to agencies a portal by which they will report back, identify for the RSOC services that had previously been restored that now need to be reversed as we embark on a maximum telework posture. And so over the last two years, we've, we've, we've refined the way in which we interact with agencies, how we solicit information, where we store it. And so instead of sending out a series of, of spreadsheets and asking folks to respond to those, BSIT has been extremely helpful in, in leveraging the SharePoint portal. And so that is used by agencies to be able to submit information about what they intend to reverse as we take on the maximum telework posture. During calendar 2021, we continued to restore services. For the most part, in the first half of the year, these were services that were not public-facing. So these were, think about, for instance, let's see, any offices that, that, again, are not, are not public-facing, but had individuals who had previously been 100% remote and teleworking. But agency heads had made, made the decision that for the improvement of their operations, they needed individuals in the workplace, either full-time or in a hybrid fashion. Every single one of those requests ought to have come through the RSOC so that we could continue to assess it both from an environmental perspective and a procedural one, to make sure that all safety considerations were in place for those restorations. Additionally, we continued and continue to receive and review requests ad hoc, for instance, for events such as in-person, large in-person trainings, you know, gatherings at, at other city sites that are not necessarily the, the, the performance of work, but it requires some sort of congregation of city employees. In the second half of the year, we started reopening public-facing services and we, we classified them into tiers. Don't necessarily need to define how those tiers were built. I think we presented that last time. But the first of the, up until tier two, those services were fully restored by October. And then we had planned to restore the third tier of services by January. But as the city administrator indicated, that is currently on pause as we revert to a maximum telework posture. We also continued to support employee testing. We acted as a resource for the, for the working groups and, and individuals who were setting it up, monitoring it and managing it. The two types of employee testing being the, the, the surveillance testing that was put in place for individuals who are unvaccinated. And, and redefine unvaccinated as individuals who have not uploaded into Workday a vaccination card, showing that they've received, if Johnson Johnson, the first, if the other two, their second dose into, into Workday. That's our definition of unvaccinated. We, we are aware that there might be some people who are vaccinated and just haven't uploaded, but that's how we define it. So those individuals who are unvaccinated are required to participate in weekly testing. So that's one of the testing options. And then there is, planning has been put in place and implemented for exposure and symptomatic testing of city employees so that they're not, just to make it a bit more accessible, especially as, around the holidays, as, as testing became something that was difficult to access around the city. Now, currently, what, what we are working on, obviously, in direct response to the Omicron variant and the, the high transmission numbers that we are seeing is, as I've mentioned throughout so far this presentation, is reverting to a maximum telework policy, which essentially means anyone who can, and by can, it means are able to do it and fully perform their, their responsibilities without there being too much of an operational impact to the agency. Anyone who can should be teleworking at this point. The reason we had this in place in the past and are putting it back in is to reduce the foot traffic and therefore potential for exposure within the workplace. We are also, and this, this, this notification will be, will be coming out very shortly within this week. We are very, very strongly recommending that all city employees who are not teleworking use KN95 masks. So there is obviously already in place a face covering policy that all, all employees, everyone coming into a city building is supposed to be wearing a face covering. We are elevating that to requiring that it be a, not requiring, strongly recommending that it be a KN95, based on, on various data sources that indicate that N95s and KN95s are the most efficient in reducing the transmission, especially as it comes, as it relates to Omicron. Safety czar will be going into a bit more detail about the KN95s and, and how that supply will be available from OEM. And then lastly, and then again, Ms. Giachi will be going into a lot more detail on this last bullet, is we will be adopting the new CDC Isolation and Quarantine Guidelines. I do want to note that we're all aware that these guidelines came out a couple of weeks ago, several weeks ago, from the CDC. We did not implement them immediately and opted instead to, to, to align ourselves with the posture of the state. And they just made that, just adopted them. Last Wednesday, we at RSOC reviewed it on Thursday and a decision was made just this past Friday. So again, aligning with the state, and that is information that is just about to, again, by the end of this week, be communicated to the entire employee population. And with that, I will now pass it on to Ms. Giachi.
Good morning, all. Hello, Chairwoman, Chairwoman McCray, CAO Shorter. Thank you, Director Niaga Nash. I'm Sebastiana Giachi, City Safety Czar from the Office of Emergency Management, member of the RSOC. We have, of course, the proposed telework posture. If you could go up one more slide, just to stay with that for a second, that I'd like to, to speak to a little bit more. We have this memo going out, as Chi Chi mentioned. The language is adopted from the physician at the U.S. Capitol. And we do feel this will be the best way to balance our continuity of services and the safety of our workforce, which are both our primary concerns. The portal instructions that will be going out are meant to capture the following information, the date that each service will adopt their full maximum telework posture. It's going to have choices for the next few Fridays. And secondly, agencies will be asked their messaging needs so that the mayor's comms team can report these to the public and on the status of city services, public-facing websites, so that the public will be aware that the in-person services may not be happening for the, for this short period, hopefully, short period. But we also have a, a third question, which is the record as to why an, an agency cannot adopt the maximum telework posture. And that is, just to make a note, that the Office of the Labor Commissioner will make accommodations, as was previously done in April 2020, to provide administrative leave on a case-by-case basis. So while we are, you know, strongly recommending this be done where, where, and where it is able to be done and where it is feasible to be done, there, that flexibility in the processes still exists. All right, moving now to the KN95s. I think, Chi Chi, you've covered this. I'll just state that there is a sample template that will also be going out with this memo, which will send usage instructions for the agencies for their staff. And this, this is going to have instructions of, most agencies know how to order these from WebIOC, but if for some reason they don't, that is there as well. The next. Then lastly, the city agency contact tracers now have adopted this new five-day CDC guidance, as, as Chi Chi mentioned on, on last Friday. And this is a very detailed document that we have, which was approved by RSOC. And it forms the instruction set for the city occupational health contact tracers. As, you know, as Chi Chi mentions, these were done as, by the recommendation of our committee members to, to hold, to align with the state. Importantly, we feel like this will be very beneficial to ensuring our continuity of services. I think this set really speaks to the way forward in, in a way that is much more manageable and that we can look for prioritizations when necessary. We can look for critical infrastructure workforce prioritizations as well. And then lastly, I'd like to get into the employee vaccination efforts that we've done thus far. We have had, you know, in partnership with the Health Department, they, they really have been running a walk-in clinic, which is open three times a week. We have also had Five Medicine, which was going out to work sites. We went to 11 work sites last year, 486 doses administered for two-to-three-hour timeframes. And this was all done later in the year. Earlier in the year, we had the Vaccination Prioritization Working Group in place, which was really working, and, and I don't think those dosages are inclusive of the, the vaccine doses that were administered by the Health Department at the BCCC. So that, that would add probably another 1,500, if I remember correctly. Lastly, for the future, we are looking into models to have more on-demand service for our workforce, how to get them to vaccination clinics. We're looking into vans, but we're also thinking about a transport service to bring them to nearby vaccine clinics, whether those be the city or even private ones. We can say that the employee vaccination rate, on average, is 75%, which is reflective of the city by and large. However, we, we do want to highlight for you some areas of concern on the next slide where we still feel we need to move the needle, if you could move it forward. So we have some of our critical infrastructure workers were, are still lower than I'd like them to be. And this is a major part of my focus for the next month or so. We really do still need to find the place to, the sweet spot here, and how to get the remainder of these workers vaccinated, without being coercive in any manner, of course, because it is a decision of, of an individual's decision. But incentives are in place. I can tell you, they haven't moved the needle tremendously. But they, they are in place for up to January 14th. And they then will fall off, I believe. But I, I'm sure the Labor Commissioner can speak more to that. We have, I'm sorry. Yep. So I, I think that we would like to also highlight on the one other point that I think we may have missed is that we had done the Agency Resource Guide as a project of last year. And so that is going to be placed on that website, on the resources page as well. We also have the City Workplace Safety Line, which is a 311 line, where folks can call in and report anonymous tips around the city whenever issues may arise. So happy to take any questions and thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank our city administrator, Shorter. I want to thank Director Niaga Nash, also our safety czar, Ms. Giachi. So thank you so much for your presentation. At this time, I'm going to open the floor to committee members for questions. Committee members, please signal or use the raise hand function if you have a question. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and start. For the safety czar, you literally just spoke about incentives and how it, the needle may not have been moved. So I'll start there. We know in early December, Mayor Scott, our city administrator, Shorter, announced the authorization of a one-time $1,000 payment to fully vaccinated city employees. That deadline is coming up on January the 14th, I believe, to be eligible. How many workers were vaccinated prior to the announcement? And how many, how many workers are vaccinated as of today?
So we can get you those numbers, Chairwoman McCray. I don't have them at my fingertips. However, I will say that it did increase. I mean, I was at some of those Vax clinics we, we ran in December and we had lines and we were spacing folks. So I know that it did make a difference. I'm not saying it didn't make an impact, but we still have a long way to go. Okay. One other point I'd like to make, we, we did the Team Up Liaison Program, does have vaccine ambassadors that we trained last year. The Health Department trained for us. And so we have 40 of those around the city. And so those 40 Vax ambassadors are working to try to help the MB resources in offices for their coworkers. This is, is an area, you know, we also want them to do a booster campaign as well. So this is the path forward and we're going to activate them as much as possible moving forward.
Chairwoman McCray, if I may add to your, your question about the incentive and its impact. So the numbers that we presented on, on the current vaccination rates, meaning number, the percentage of, of Vax cards that have been uploaded, the process there is that when an employee uploads it, a member of their agency HR has to review it and verify that it is, that it looks like a legitimate vaccination card before it's officially considered uploaded. We currently have in the system as a 110, 2.2% of employees who have uploaded, but are still under review. Additionally, obviously, as we, as we get closer to the 14th date, we anticipate additional uploads.
Let's see, Director Herbert, Herbert, if you have anything to add to that?
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Committee members, I do have a little bit more context around the, the vaccination piece. And as Director Niaga Nash mentioned, there is a process by which the vaccination verification documentation is verified. But what I can say is that on December 6th, which was when, around the time that the, the vaccination incentive was announced, we had 8,708 employees who had uploaded vaccination verification information. As of yesterday, which is the most recent data that we had, that number is 9,726 that have uploaded vaccination verification information. Of that, 9726, 9,433 have been verified, meaning that they, that there are some that the HR, agency HR practitioners are still working to verify and confirm the documentation that was uploaded. But we did see a, a little less than 1,000 additional employees upload vaccination verification documentation from the announcement of the incentive to yesterday.
Thank you. And that's the information I was looking for. Can you just also state the total number of city employees at this time so we can just put this in a perspective?
Yes. And, and let me just, and I'll provide some context for that as well. That number does fluctuate as we have separations, as we have new hires. As of yesterday, that number was 12,524.
So I'll go into my next question, and it may be too early because we haven't, we haven't reached a deadline of January the 14th. Maybe you're going to get some more. Maybe you're going to get some more, maybe you'll get some more people who are going to update, upload their vaccination cards. Have there been any additional discussions around adding additional incentives to employ city workers to get vaccinated? Um, CA Shorter, I think that may, that may be for you.
Yes, good, good morning again, Chairwoman McRae. What I'll say is that we're always open and will, will continue to be. We are going to be entering a period where we're going to be working with our, with our labor commissioner and our agency leaders to begin to, we provide it sort of disciplinary warnings and, and, and we'll be providing more disciplinary, formal disciplinary action to employees who are not compliant, but am certainly open, and the mayor is certainly open. And we have been having discussions about other ways that we could provide notice and make comfortable employees who have not. I'll also say there are, and may be employees who, who, for whatever reason, are intimidated by the process of, of loading information onto Workday. And so we certainly, as a government, want to be positioned to support our employees as they, as they navigate the Workday system. And so we will continue to do that and continue to make ourselves available to, to do that agency by agency.
Thank you, City Administrator Shorter. I'm going to go into my second question. Public jobs are recovering slower than the private sector. It's straining out basic government services across the country, and that's going to definitely include Baltimore City. Now, the private sector is increasing wages. They're providing bonuses for employee referrals. They're providing bonuses for meeting certain requirements, such as showing up for consecutive weeks or on valium, high-valium days. What incentives, if any, is the city providing to recruit employees and retain the employees that we have?
I'll, I'll thank you for that question, Chairwoman. I, I'm going to start, and I'll ask Director Herbert to chime in. I'll say that we've worked really hard, especially over the pandemic, to provide where we could CARES Act dollars to, to provide for awards for employees who were going above and beyond to help support this government and support the city during the pandemic. I, I would define those awards as retention, because it was a very difficult time, very difficult time for our city. And we were asking employees to, while dealing with their own personal issues at home, to come in and help our government during the spend, during the pandemic. And so we can, we can certainly go through which awards were provided via CARES Act dollars and which awards were provided with operating dollars. We are certainly contemplating continuing that, that process of thinking through where we need to provide strategic retention awards to make for specific job categories where we have challenges, either maintaining employees or recruiting employees. And this is across the enterprise, across the government. I think there's, but there are specific categories of employees that we talk through as, as a leadership team that will require some additional support, financial support, because it is a very difficult job market. And, and so I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'm happy to sort of talk about specific job categories, but want to keep it general and allow for the director to, to, to chime in.
Thank you, CAO Shorter and, and Madam Chair. I think that the, the CAO touched on exactly what I was going to say, that there are certain job classifications that we have in the city where not only across the enterprise, but across the country, we are seeing a critical shortage. And that's going to drive the decision-making around how we strategically identify those classifications that we may need to do something additional for in terms of compensation or retention. We have been very purposeful in providing additional compensation throughout the pandemic for certain forward-facing service providers, understanding that there's, this is a very tight labor market and that as the public, the, the private sector is increasing wages and, and signing bonuses and the like, the city as a governmental entity can't always respond in, in a like manner. But we have been strategic in identifying ways that we can provide additional compensation where we can, as the CAO mentioned, through using CARES Act money strategically for additional stipends and the like. We see those as retention measures, as rewarding our employees for coming in during this difficult time and providing that critical service, and also providing an additional, additional income for them. But we are looking at certain classifications where there is a critical shortage, not just in the city of Baltimore, not only in government employment, but a, across the country. And those are, those are going to be, those are going to drive where we strategically place those dollars to, to, to be more competitive with the private sector.
Thank you, and I just want to know, most of you know that I'm saying that because I'm very big on restoring city services. I want to make sure that we are continuing to be creative, and as you guys keep mentioning, strategic about how we're allocating these dollars, the CARES Act dollars, the ARPA dollars, to making sure that we are recruiting and retaining employees that we have, so we can make sure that we are keeping city services on track. So just know, that's where that question is coming from. I'm going to move to Councilman Torrance, I believe he had a few questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a quick question. After the 14th, is there a way that, as a city and Workday, that we can, because I know that the data isn't as accurate as possible in terms of vaccination status? Is there a way that we can put a form or a check whenever you log into Workday, you have that reminder that pops up, where we can have people consent to us actually grabbing their information from IMUNET, so that we can bring it back over to us? That might be a simpler way in just having people update their information to Workday as well.
We will definitely consider that, Councilman Torrance. We'll, we'll look into that. I know that we can, on the splash page to Workday, include messaging that reminds. I know that we have worked with legal in the past, and there were a number of concerns around using data from IMUNET to verify vaccination status for a city program. And I would defer to legal to, to talk kind of through those concerns, but we will consider, look at how we can better communicate through Workday. We are relying on our employees to report and upload vaccination verification documentation. And then the HR professionals actually view, they actually have to look at that verification documentation and ensure that it is what it purports to be. Is this a vaccination card as it purports to be? Is it a printout from IMUNET as it purports to be? And if it is, they check on it and approve it, and it becomes a, you know, a verified document in the system. I think that it's important to note that Baltimore City is a leader, and we're developing best practices in this procedure. I know that there are a number of other jurisdictions who have followed our lead with respect to how we are documenting and verifying employee vaccination data and documentation. But I will, I will defer to legal. There were some issues around utilizing data from IMUNET to support a, a city program to verify vaccination status.
I will be curious to see, I, I'd be curious to see that advice because city schools uses it for validating our young people's vaccinations in terms of funding for schools, for the school district. So I'm wondering, why can't we do that for our actual employees? If we currently have a city slash quasi-agency that apparently doesn't. My next question is in terms of validation, because my, my, it's okay Papa, one second please. My next question is related to validating, because we know that people purport and have. I'm just going to move on, Madam Chair, and put my question in the chat.
And I'm sorry, I was on mute. So when I see your question, I'll go ahead and just ask it, ask it for you, Councilman Torrance, once you throw it up. Are there any other committee members who had any questions at this time? And seeing none, I do see Councilwoman Odette Ramos. I did see that you turned your camera on. Did you have any questions specifically regarding this hearing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I, I do, and I appreciate the opportunity to ask a question. Thank you. I was looking at the last slide that was posted in terms of the vaccination rates for various departments. And I was wondering if there's going to be some specific work done on particularly the fire department that has not had a high vaccination rate? I worry about them, obviously. They are our first responders. They're also, you know, having a, a few staff in the fire department is a real problem. So I'm curious if we're going to do some specific work there, or maybe it's an issue with uploading the vaccination card. So if you could let me know, that would be great. Thank you.
I'm, I'm happy. Thank you for that question, Councilwoman Ramos. I'm happy to start, and others, other colleagues, please feel free to jump in if there is additional and more detailed information. What I'll say is that we are, yes, working with all of the agencies that were identified there to come up with individual solutions, and I want to give by way of example DPW. We are standing up a specific vaccination site and testing site specifically for DPW. And that, to, to a large extent, is because we did hear directly from, from the leadership team at the agency that this would be helpful for them and for their workforce, and, and we have been quickly to, to do that. And so we are in conversation with the, the other agencies and doing everything we can to encourage our workforce to vaccinate where, where, where it's, there are no accommodations in place.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I know it's very challenging, and you're doing everything you can. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for the question.
I wanted, I want to just follow up on Councilwoman, Councilwoman Ramos's question. What specifically are we doing outside of just the clinics? How are we targeting these workers? Before the DPW workers go on their shift, I know they may have a limited amount of time before they get on these trucks, and I'm specifically speaking about the sanitation workers. They may have a limited amount of time. Has the health department representatives been there before their shift to speak with them one-on-one about the importance, or just to learn, what are your fears about getting a vaccination? Walk us through the other strategies that you've used to target our workers outside of email blasts, outside of flyers, and outside of just testing clinics. Can, that's just a follow-up to Councilwoman Ramos's question.
Sure, I'll start, and then certainly, I think our safeties are can add additional context. But as, as noted, we understand that there are some agencies with lower vaccination rates than others. And so the city has the team-up program. We have our value ambassadors, which have been working throughout the community. And those individuals receive training and curriculum around how to do outreach to support education around the importance of vaccination. And so months ago, we, we've been working with Tiana to ensure that our team-up liaisons had similar training. And again, are, those are individuals that are implanted within agencies and can be that, that ambassador discussing the importance of, of vaccination. And so those are the folks that, that really we're looking to, to be that trusted messenger, very similar to what we've done in the community. And then with that, I'll turn it over to Tiana to discuss further.
Yes, so thank you, Dr. Drazza. We have those 40 vaccine ambassadors trained from that program, and we are looking to train an additional 40. I do feel like we need to do a little more in-person training, especially for those workers who do not have electronic access. We have had one citywide town hall with Dr. Drazza, and we have had 32 mini-town halls, and those have been with Dr. McDowell and I at the request of an agency. But now, I think at this point, we really need to not wait for the requests necessarily of the agencies, but just start going out to various units that we see have problematic vaccination rates. And now that we have the full contingent of data, that's going to be much easier to do, which we did when we were really doing the breadth of that town hall work. So we will continue with our mini-town halls, targeted ones with our experts. You know, hopefully, maybe we'll, we'll have some more partnerships with health to do that as well. And I think that is the, the most concerted effort we can do is to meet one-on-one and speak to folks about their concerns and with the curriculum that, on vaccine hesitancy that we were all trained in by the health department.
Council Chair, Chairwoman McRae, if I may add, sorry, someone else was speaking. So in, in addition to these outreach efforts, there also has been, thanks to the Office of the Labor Commissioner, Commissioner Moore Carter, partnership with labor unions to, for them to make available meeting space and, and advertise to their members opportunities to come in, particularly when we identified that part of the reason why vaccination cards were not being uploaded was one of technical ability. And so in addition to HR representatives from agencies being encouraged to go out and physically help people upload their cards, there also have been these partnerships with the, with major unions to get folks together and in person and assist them there and then to get their cards uploaded.
If I may add, Madam Chair, Darnell Ingram regarding this specific question. And to address your question regarding DPW, I do know, given city administrators' representation regarding targeting DPW with testing specifically and vaccination, that organization is working to help educate its population regarding the importance of, of both, which is why we instituted this specific targeted approach to Department of Public Works, given the nuances and their schedules. In addition, once the program goes live next week, the, the, the HR practitioners, as well as, they actually have a person designated to manage this, these efforts in DPW to actually do these targeted communications during shift differentials to ensure that the employees are well-informed about testing as well as vaccinations in the city.
I want to thank you all for your responses, Councilwoman Ramos. I want to thank you for just raising this question. At this time, I'm going to go ahead. Councilman Torrance, I want to make sure that his question gets answered. He's just having some technical difficulties at this time. So his question within the chat is how are we at, how are we advising staff to validate their vaccination cards, given that we have seen some persons who show counterfeit cards?
Thank you for the question, and Councilwoman, again, this is Quentin Herbert, Director of the Department of Human Resources. What I can say is that we have provided the HR community copies of both what the vaccination verification, what the vaccination card looks like, as well as what the IMUNET printout looks like. And what they are looking for when they look at this uploaded document is to ensure that the name on the document matches the name on the employee, that if it's a two-dose vaccination, that both doses have been administered. They're looking at the dates on the vaccination cards. They're looking at the dates on the IMUNET printout to make sure that the, the name on the printout matches the name of the employee. Aside from that, there's not a lot that employees, that the HR staff can do to, just to make sure that the, the document is what it purports to be, right? Employees would be subject to disciplinary action if it's later discovered that the information that they uploaded was in fact counterfeit or fraudulent. We have to rely on our employees to be truthful and honest in uploading their information. And if we, if we don't have that trust, that, that speaks to a larger problem. But I, I think that, that they're doing all that they can to ensure that what has, what is purported to be uploaded in, in Workday is what it purports to be.
Councilman Torrance, if you have any follow-ups, just go ahead and drop it in the chat, and we'll just make sure that we. and we'll just make sure that we, um, ask, ask those questions for you. Um, are there any, um, additional questions from members or from council members who are on the line at this time?
Chair, I have one additional point I'd like to mention regarding peer education. And we did do some town halls that had, um, peers who we felt would be good role models for vaccine. And I think that's an area that I'd like to highlight in the future so that we could find in them, in a manner that is most effective to the workers. Um, we had a Latinx ambassador, and we had, uh, some firefighters from the, um, Vulcan Blazers, but I think we, we can really get, dig into that a little more and try to find more resources that really resonate with our employees.
And just, and just to note, I think we're, I think we're all on the same page. We just, as you guys say, strategic, I think I'm, I'm looking at creative. Let's explore all options and make sure that we're touching our employees. For me, I think that it may be, just as you stated, we need to go more so in an in-person, maybe a one-on-one to hit people. Um, I know that some of my friends were not going to get the vaccine until I got the vaccine. When I explained it and I walked them through, we need to hear people out. Um, and I'm going to stop talking with that right there. I want to get back to another question that I had. This is regarding mental health and, um, just return anxiety when we do have to come back. And Director Herbert, this might be for you. Solid and constant, um, communication with employees around return timelines and adjustments based upon the virus's present impact have proven to ease worker anxiety. Um, what are we currently doing to communicate with our city workers? Or is there a plan for the future for when you do move these tier-three workers back in? And maybe that's also for, um, Dr. Drazza and the Health Department as well. I just want to know, how do we plan on communicating with workers in the future to reduce that return anxiety?
Thank you, uh, for the question, Madam Chair. I will say that we work very closely with the R-SOC, uh, where that communication comes for, from. And our goal always is to communicate broadly and well enough advanced with the agencies and with our workforce so that there aren't any surprises. We understand that there is a lot of anxiety, uh, around the seemingly ever-changing and ever-evolving, uh, disease known as COVID-19. And so one of the things that we have in HR that we consistently communicate with employees about is the availability of EAP. And in fact, uh, the mayor sent out an e-blast just before the holidays to remind our employees of the availability of ERP, not just to, to assist with stresses around COVID-19, but all of those sort of mental health stresses that we see at, at, at this time, which is heightened, uh, by COVID-19. And so our, our EAP staff works very, very hard. Um, we have, we have seen a, an uptick in the number of new clients, uh, since the onset of, of COVID-19. We have extended office hours with our EAP so that employees, one of the things that we heard from our workforce was that the hours were not always convenient. 8:30 to 4:30 was not always convenient because many of them worked during the day and could not get in. So we extended our hours from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM to allow for employees to come in either before work or after work, uh, to, to schedule those appointments. And, and we have been, uh, been, been communicating that, uh, regularly, that EAP is a resource, uh, for our, with licensed clinical practitioners for our workforce.
Can, can you just go into, um, just briefly, just briefly, what EAP is? Um, a lot of times I'm referring these charm city, I'm referring people to the website to re-watch these hearings who are employees. So you, can you just, I know what EAP is, but can you just explain it very briefly?
Sure. It is the Employee Assistance Program. Uh, the Employee Assistance Program has licensed clinical social workers that staff that office. Um, they provide complete confidential services to our employees for any mental health need. Um, they also work with agencies on referrals. There are supervisory referrals to EAP. Uh, they meet with employees who, uh, for a whole host of reasons. For example, uh, compliance with our substance abuse control policy, compliance with our workplace violence policy where employees need to kind of work through things. If there are performance issues and employee expresses that they're having challenges at home or, or at work that are impacting performance, they often will come to EAP and receive those services. Uh, the, these, again, I, I can't stress enough, licensed clinical social workers, these are licensed practitioners. It's 100% confidential. The information does not leave the confines of those sessions, um, with those, those licensed clinical social workers. So it's, it's a, it's a resource that we provide to our employees for those, those mental health, um, experiences that all of us at one point or, or another in life will experience.
Thank you, Director. I have one additional question. Um, one additional question, just about productivity. Um, do we have any available statistics? So can you guys speak to trends? Um, do we have any statistics that analyze how produ- productivity has been impacted by teleworking? Um, specifically, has, have our city employees been more productive, less productive? Or has there been no recognizable, um, change in productivity?
Thank you for the question, Madam Chair. We are looking at that data across the enterprise. Uh, anecdotally, what I can say, uh, is that I can speak for HR staff, and I can say that I'm receiving emails later in the evening and earlier in the morning. Folks, uh, are working longer because they have the ability and readily, readily accessibility of their laptop in their respective homes. Uh, we have not seen a dip in productivity. And I, I do have bi-weekly meetings with the HR community from HR practitioners across the city. Um, there, by and large, we have not seen a dip in productivity from employees who are working remotely. In fact, um, as we look at the trends that you mentioned, hybrid scheduling is, you know, is a trend that appears for all intents and purposes that will be here long after COVID-19. Um, and there was a very interesting 60 Minutes piece that talked about, uh, that flexibility that comes with hybrid scheduling and how that is becoming one of the major drivers in the Great Resignation. Um, and our ability to, to, to stay on top of that and, and to implement those best practices and to be flexible while still providing the service to the citizens of our city. Um, that is something that we're looking to, 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 to get more data on. We are looking at it. I'm working with Director Niaga Nash, and we have a subgroup. Uh, we're working on, on, on compiling that data and piloting some programming and looking at, at, at how productive we actually are from a hybrid schedule here in the city of Baltimore. So there's more to come on that, to answer your question.
Okay, um, before we close out, just want to extend the opportunity, colleagues, um, were there any additional questions at this time? And seeing and hearing none, I want to thank, um, everyone from the Restoration of Services Oversight Committee, um, Al, City Administrator, for being here as well today. Um, we truly appreciate the work that you guys are doing to, for our city workers, and we thank you for being here. At this time, um, the work session on Resolution 21-0052R is now in recess. The committee will likely schedule additional meetings on the resolution in the future to keep the city council, city employees, and residents informed on this important issue. Everyone have a great.